Good afternoon and welcome to the first, the fourteenth annual Town of Chatham Budget Summit, which is a joint meeting of the Select Board and the Finance Committee with the Department Heads and Representatives of the Monomoy Regional School District at this October 21, 2025 meeting of the Chatham Select Board. Please note this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the Chair. Seeing none, pursuant to Governor Healey's March 28, 2025 signing of Chapter Two of the Acts of 2025 extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 20, until June 30, 2027, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 203-386-491, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, Xfinity Channel 1072, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide realtime access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. First order of business is to establish a quorum of the Select Board. Ms. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Maderis?
Present.
Mr. Smith?
Present.
Chair is present. Mr. Dykens is absent. I'll ask the Chair of the Finance Committee to establish a quorum of the Finance Committee. Ms., excuse me, Mr. Daniel.
Thank you, Dean. Mr. Papalardo?
Here.
Mr. Whitley?
Here.
Ms. Sprague?
Here.
Ms. Andres?
Here.
Ms. Shields, I'm sorry. I'm not used to that. Mr. Young?
There.
Mr. Daniel is present. I'm sorry, Mr. Doan just joined us. Thank you. And Ms. Madison?
Here.
Great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. And I do want to acknowledge the presence of representatives of the school district, including the Superintendent, Dr. Carpenter. I do want to make a public announcement because I did receive an email shortly before this meeting relative to the fact that the posted agenda does not contain the item, public announcements and agenda item requests. That was an intentional decision on my part because I felt that the focus of this meeting, as it has been 13 times prior, and I've attended every single one of these summits, should be on the finances of the town. At the same time, it is within my discretion to allow public announcements and agenda item requests, and I intend to do so as within my discretion. And there's a specific agenda item request that the author of the email asked that I place on future agendas, a future agenda, the subject of the placement of the category, public announcements and agenda item requests. I'm not going to honor that request because I don't think it is necessary. There's only been one time prior during my chairmanship when we have not had that on the agenda. That was an inadvertent error administratively made, and I did allow public announcements and agenda item requests that evening. And I'll allow the same this evening as well. Also, in the email, there was concern expressed about transparency and the perceived lack of information relative to certain incidents or accidents that occurred that are within the jurisdiction and purview of the Police Department. And I am going to ask Chief Anderson in a moment to comment on those so that we do have transparency, and I appreciate the concerns expressed by the emailer. So with that, I'm going to open the meeting for any public announcements or agenda item requests from people in the audience, members of the boards, or anyone online. Okay, seeing none. Chief Anderson, did you want to just come up and talk about several incidents that have occurred within the town over the last few days?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, Chairs of both boards. Out of respect for your time, I will be brief, but I feel that this is important. Over the past two days, several members of my staff have been portrayed in social media in very unfavorable manners and untruths. I'm here to hopefully clear this up. The question of transparency was brought up in an email, or lack thereof. And I just want to explain to everybody in this room and everybody listening on television that there is nobody committed to transparency more than me. What is released or not released from my department, I am guided by mass state law and statute and rights on what I can release and what I can't release. And I apologize if some members of the public feel that that's inadequate or insufficient. We had a series of misfortunate events that happened in our community over the past few weeks and several over Saturday, and I'll be brief. There was mention of the Stony Hill crash with the serious injury. That vehicle autopsy and investigation did not get finished until today. So prior till today, we could not make any comments about the operator or the injured. And there was a concern about the roadway conditions and the historical dangerousness of that intersection. And because that intersection and that investigation is complete, I can tell you that it was not the road conditions, it was failure to obey stop signs by a vehicle operator. There was a second motor vehicle crash on Main Street at Pond View just about a week ago. That crash is still under investigation because we've established, we requested a search warrant for the vehicle. That takes time. I can't release any information about the operator or the injured until that's done. Regarding the crash on Main Street on Saturday, Oktoberfest, No Kings were competing events in that town that day. I had nine officers assigned to the day shift that day. I wish I had 10. Four were assigned to Oktoberfest, four were on patrol, including a command staff member. The No Kings rally, at the same time, a peaceful protest, we were investigating an assault and battery that occurred in front of several video recorders which we were trying to obtain the footage from. At the time, with the information that we had, an arrest could not be made at the time. But that investigation was finished today, and charges were filed against somebody in town for assault and battery. Also competing that day, at the same time, I had two protective custodies, two people intoxicated. I had to deal with transporting and housing them at the police facility. At the same time, I had an arrest, and I had to protect a crime scene, and I had to take a prisoner to the hospital till Monday, which taxed a shift officer every single shift. So when we talk about the crash, I appreciate those agencies that were mentioned in that letter, Cape Cod Incidents, Chatham Spread the Word. They did us a favor by notifying the community. It might not be official, it might not be from the police station, because we don't have time to prioritize at that point. The priorities for us at that time for that incident was the safety of the injured, the safety of the operator, and the quality of our investigation. Public notifications at that point in time, in my opinion, were very low. And if that is something that you guys don't agree with, I will be happy to discuss that and modify the way we disseminate information in the future. The information probably would have changed if that crash involved a utility pole with outages for other people, a gas leak that involved other people, a water leak that involved other people, but that was an isolated event. And quite frankly, all of the other social media sites that are out there that spread the word, they did just that. They spread the word when we could not. Again, I appreciate the author's concern and the author's passion. I just hope that this clears the air that there is no lack of transparency deliberately from myself or anybody from my agency. And if you, members of the board or the public, want to change the thresholds that we can release information, I will be glad to discuss that with you. But I will defend our actions, our press releases, or lack thereof because of what we can and can't release. The situations on the release of information does not fall on the town manager this weekend. It falls on me, and I will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. You know, I think this is really not appropriate to go back and forth with a Q and A, but I appreciate your taking the opportunity to clarify, you know, the information about these events.
Thank you very much. I apologize for taking up your time.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, all right. I see no other requests for agenda items or public announcements. So we will now go to the business at hand, which is the Budget Summit for FY27. And I'll ask the town manager and our Finance Director, Carrie Maserol, to take the podium. And we will allow public comment. I'll try to insert that as best we can. I don't know whether we'll do it during the presentations. I know that is our policy, our new policy. We'll do it as best we can. Members of both boards will probably interject from time to time, and if members of the public want to do that, I will allow that. Thank you. Jill, please proceed.
Thank you, Chief Anderson, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight is a really exciting time for us, especially Carrie and I, for kicking off the budget review period. And our budget that we're presenting tonight as a budget summit for discussion is the July 1st, 2026 through June 30, 2027, and that's the fiscal year 2027. And we've called this budget "Navigating the Fiscal Year Ahead." The annual Budget Summit brings together the Select Board, the Finance Committee, the Regional School Committee, and Administration, as well as town departments, to provide a common foundation for the upcoming budget process. The discussion helps establish shared priorities, understand fiscal drivers, and identify areas for coordination before the formal development of the FY2027 budget begins. What we have on this slide, it's pretty, and it's also a rolled-up agenda. A more detailed agenda packet has been provided, as well as a detailed staff report with attachments. Tonight, we will review the town's financial context, share departmental perspectives by two departments, and identify priorities and challenges that will guide the development of the FY2027 operating and capital budgets. This is similar to what you've seen in the past. Our budgetary objectives: Protect core services and values, fiscally responsible. One of the items under fiscally responsible that we're having under review are updates to the FY2018 budget and financial policies. We've contracted with the Collins Center, who has helped us out with other financial projects and policies, and we hope to provide them very soon to the Select Board for review and consideration, and certainly to the Finance Committee. So that is under review. We will always present a balanced budget, and then, as budgets reflect priorities, we will hope to fund community priorities for FY2027 and beyond. In 2024, the Select Board revamped its goal-setting process envisioning Chatham in 2030. And we've utilized SMART goals: Specific, Measurable, Achievable, Relevant, and Time-Bound. The Board then identified gold buckets where the town can move forward on initiatives as priorities that may extend beyond one year. The Select Board will discuss the goal-setting process at an upcoming meeting on November 18. These are the specific gold buckets in no particular order: Year-round Housing, Environmental Conservation, Cultural Resiliency, and Natural Resources, Educational Excellence, Water Management, to Foster a Vibrant and Sustainable Local Economy, and Respond Effectively to the Needs of a Diverse, Welcoming, and Livable Chatham. I'll now turn the presentation over to our Director of Finance, Carrie Maserol, to provide a financial overview. And as she reviews, please think about some top community priorities or challenges we should address in fiscal year 2027. Carrie?
Thank you, Jill. Good evening, everyone. I think maybe I want to go back to this slide just to do a recap of our current budget for FY2026. So what was voted for FY2026, our operating budget, was around $45 million, which was an increase of 10.33%. This includes the contractual obligations that we had and new debt service. And also in FY2026, the educational assessments were up 7.55%, with Monomoy Regional School District at $11 million and Cape Cod Regional Tech at $587,000. And then the FY2026 five-year capital plan was $3,162,000. So for FY2026, the tax rate increased 4.28% over FY2025. The current tax rate is $3.67. So what were the budget drivers for 2026? We had contract obligations, our health insurance, water and sewer operation contracts, CMAS, custodial services increases, general liability insurance increases, and debt service. We have our salaries and wages, contractual increases for all of our unions, and then we have education assessments that we're responsible for. So these are the budgetary components. When we look at our budget, we look at our revenues, tax levy, local receipts, other available funds. And then we look at our expenses: General Operating Budget, Educational Assessments, Water Operating, our five-year capital plan, debt. And then we also have our other capital items, which are usually separate articles. And in order to come up with a balance, we have to come up with a balanced budget by the end of, well, even now, I come up with a balanced budget, but even by the end, we have to have a balanced budget for town meeting. And all of our expenses begin with the Department Heads requesting to support a level service budget. I mean, yeah, a level service budget. So our revenues, available funding sources, what do we have? We have our tax levy, which can be increased 2.5% annually, and new growth. We have our local receipts, which are excise, user charges, fines, and other programs. We have state aid. Our debt exclusions, which are in excess of our Prop 2.5, so debt exclusions can be taxed above our Prop 2.5. And then we have our excess levy capacity. And we have other available funds, reserves, and other funds, for specific purposes. So this early in the budget process, figures are based on preliminary estimates. As we move further along, these estimates will be refined and become more accurate. We look at revenues, property tax, estimate local receipts, and look at other available funds. The expenses are level services, and our debt is looked at our current debt schedule. And then we have our education assessments. So revenue projections for our Prop 2.5 is estimated around $1.3 million. And then new growth is estimated around $375,000 for FY2027, although over the past three years, new growth has been roughly around $463,000 for just an estimate for an average. Local receipts, we can go up to 90% of our local receipts, according to the Department of Revenue. So right now, we're estimating our local receipts for FY2027 projected at 88% of the FY2025 actuals. And we'll address this as we move forward through the budget, if we need to. And state aid, right now, we're estimating a 2% increase over FY2026. So this kind of gives you a little bit of a preview. Our current levy base is $39 million. We're allowed 2.5% increase, so that's $987,000, plus the new growth estimate of $375,000. And then we have our excluded debt, which is $8,770,000. Our estimated local receipts at 88% of 25 actuals are $12 million. And then estimated other funds, I'll have to look at that further, but I just wanted to point out that we did have our free cash certified as of October 8, and it's $5 million.
Carrie, can I just interrupt on the estimated local receipts? So it's 88%. Have we been bumping that up over the last several years? Because in the past, I think it was around 85%.
Yep. I've bumped it up the past two years.
And was the reason for doing, what's the reason for doing that?
To level out the tax rate so it's not so high when we go to do our budget, because we've had a lot of increases over the past couple of years. So we had the 10% increase for FY26, and I believe in '25, it was also around 10%.
We brought it down really low during the COVID years, if I recall. Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. So local receipts and what they are. Local receipts are revenue sources that are derived at the local level for programs, services, and amenities, directly influenced by behavior, economy, and trends. Some examples are charges for services, beach and transfer station stickers, excise tax, and traditional rooms tax, and also investment income are just some examples. So this was in your packet. This is our first quarter for FY2026 compared to the first quarter for FY2025. As you will see, the local receipts are slightly lower this current fiscal year compared to last fiscal year for the same timeframe. This is another reason why we estimate conservatively, because local receipts are subject to fluctuation based on timing of collections, economic activity, subject to fluctuation based on timing of collections, economic activity, and one-time factors that can vary year to year. Although this is coming in at lower than what is expected, that doesn't mean that we're not going to come in higher. It just could be a timing of posting of receipts, so. This is historical local receipts. So as you can see, I think Dean was kind of just getting back at 2022, where you estimated a little bit more conservative. So FY '22 was the recovery from COVID, and you can see the local receipts revenue start to level out and slower increases between '23, '24, and '25. So this is why, another reason why we want to budget conservatively, because we want to just make sure that, you know, we are receiving the revenues that we are estimating. This is a combination of traditional and short-term rentals. This is a comparison from FY '20 through FY 2025 of the hotel motel tax receipts for the general fund. These funds help support the operating budget. As you can see, there is a slight decline in tax revenue, but holding conservatively around 3.8 million. This slide is the breakout between short-term and traditional. The short-term rentals took effect beginning July 1, 2019. However, they were not broken out by the Department of Revenue until fiscal year 2021, so that's why it starts at 2021. So for FY 2022, there was a large increase in traditional lodging. As you can see in the chart, there has been a slight decline in short-term rental revenue from '23 to '24, and again, from '24 to '25. Again, it's important to look at the trends from prior years to determine what we're going to be estimating for FY 2027.
Can I interject again? And if anyone else wants to ask a question or make a comment, just seek recognition from me, please. That's a somewhat significant drop from 2024 to 2025. Do we know why, especially considering that so many of the, the number of short-term rentals being registered with the Board of Health has gone up dramatically? Do we have any idea?
I don't know why it's dropped so much. I have no idea.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome, but it's definitely something to maybe consider looking into further. This slide is the additional hotel motel funds that we received in FY 2025, where the 1% goes to the Chatham Elementary School Special Reserve Fund, and then we have 1% going to the attainable housing receipts reserve fund. So in 2025, each fund received $995,000. This was also a decrease from FY 2024. It was a 1.6% decrease, or $56,000 less in each fund. So this is the meals tax. It's from, the chart shows from FY '19 to FY 2025. Meals tax saw a decrease of $100,000 for FY 2021 versus 2020, yet rebounded strongly in 2022 and again in 2023. And as you can see on the graph, the meals tax revenue shows signs of leveling off between 2023 and 2025, with only very slight increases. Other available funds consist of free cash and other funds that are typically in a receipts reserve, a stabilization fund, or revolving fund. So these are other funds that we can use to support the budget, but we don't use Chapter 90 to support the budget. However, we do get funds from Chapter 90 to offset other projects. We have attached a five-year forecash, which is by nature conservative. We look for trends, and with inflation rising, pay close attention to local taxes that may fluctuate as spending may decrease. The operating budget growth chart includes educational assessments. The total for FY 2026 operating budget with the education was $47 million, but it does not include debt on this. It's just education and operating. And as you can see, there was some enhanced staffing to provide the same level services to the community. This slide shows the FY '23 through FY '25 actual operating budgets. From '23 through '25, you can see this, on the slide, there's been large increases between '24 and '25, mainly due to increased staffing, salaries and wage increases, the cost of rising health insurance, Barnstable County pension, general liability costs, and just the cost of inflation overall has increased, and the rising costs of utilities and putting pressure on our operating budgets. I'm going to pass this over to Jill.
Thank you, Carrie. So new for this Budget Summit are department highlights, hearing from two members of Team Chatham tonight to illustrate the connection between budget line items and the impact of funding, including examples of efficiencies and operational efficiencies and innovation. I'd like to introduce Greg Berman, who's our Director of Natural Resources, and have him come to the podium, and then he will hand it off to our IT Manager, Ryan Darman. Greg?
Thank you, Jill. There we go. Perfect, thank you. All right, we're in business. So, thank you for having me, Greg Berman, your Director of Natural Resources. So I like to think that every budget line has a story to tell. As you can see in your packet, this is usually what we see when we look through ClearGov or digital budget books, and there's no expectation to be able to see those. I just want to call out that there's a lot of line items that don't always have a lot of detail in them, but we do try to have comments. For this particular line, this is a shellfish operating supplies budget, about $1,000, relatively minor, but it, you know, supports our waiters, our rakes, our supplies, but really, it does ramp up into the enforcement and propagation of shellfish in town, adding up to 2.5 million Cohogs produced annually. And in addition to that, we also have our 1.7 million in landings in 2023, equaling $3 to $7 million in overall economic benefit. So this is an example, you know, there's a lot of small line items feeding up to this, but it has a lot of impact for a relatively small line in there. Next, this is our Harbor Master budget, and you may have seen it last year. This is our fiscal year '26. We added a new in-capital outlay for a wave sensor. This was an $8,000 line item. This is going to have real-time wave conditions, sorry, real-time wave conditions with wave height, wave direction, wave period. So when it's breaking eight to 10 feet out in the inlets, you'll be able to see that before going out. This will probably be something where we have QR codes at town landings. People will be able to see it in their homes, on their phones. This is in addition to the bar reports that our Harbor Master puts out. But this is another, you know, relatively small investment that's going to have a lot of impact for the town. Over here, now, town landing budgets, this is a kind of standing line for $10,000. This could be anything from redesigning the parking over at Sears Road this last fiscal year, or working to find and plug a hole in the Riders Cove bulkhead. Almost all this work has extensive cooperation with DPW. They provide the assistance, the know-how. We identify the problem, then they help us fix it. And there we are, identifying the hole leaking through, and this is just an example of, you know, temporary fixes while we have larger capital projects coming. So, you know, Riders Cove is a large capital project, and I'll be talking about those and really all our large infrastructure later in the budget season. I don't have that much time tonight. I did want to talk about our recent grant applications, and for all of these line items on here, we did list the Select Board objective or goal, seeing how it applies to it. The town was recently awarded a $730,000 Food Securities Infrastructure Grant. This is for the upwelling supplies within the 90 Bridge Street to offset the impacts to the taxpayers. We were also awarded a $37,000 grant from Coastal Home Management for the procurement phase immediately preceding construction for Jackknife Beach. Phase two would be a subsequent fiscal year, where it would actually be the construction phase. We've had very good luck with our dredge grants. We've had Stage Harbor Mill Creek, that was 271,000 last year. This fiscal year, we have a 358,000 grant for Aunt Lydia's Cove, which we are desperately trying to get done, trying to get our 10-year permit in place with the federal shutdown. So we're working towards it, or we have our game plan the second they open back up. We also received a SNAP grant. This is for technical assistance for coastal resilience work. This is coordination with the Cape Cod Commission, looking at our regulations and bylaws, and doing communication, outreach, and financial impacts to see how it may or may not impact the town as the town chooses to go for or not go for some of these changes. We also applied for a Port Securities grant. This is to fund the surf boat for the Harbor Master Division. We haven't heard back about that one yet. The Seaport Economic Council, we have gotten awards in the past, $1 million for 90 Bridge. We put in for another one for 90 Bridge, but have not heard back about that one yet. So, you know, our department and really all our town does look for ways to defray the costs as we go through every town budget. So I said I wasn't going to really have time to talk about our larger capital projects, but as these projects are undertaken, so I have to exit out of here. Nope, it's not coming up. Mark had so much faith in me, too. Screens, test bar. All right, so I'm right there.
Do you need to get out of it? Or do you want to?
I just want, I have that link active. Oh, there we go. So under our Town Projects page, we're going to have all our capital projects. We currently have our 90 Bridge Street project, which has been there certainly since I got here, was updated most recently this morning. We have our background. We have, you know, what's been going on and what will go on over the last couple of weeks, and we always have a, you know, rolling slideshow of activity, and a schedule is in place from our contractor onsite. So anytime you have any questions, feel free to look at our schedules, see how we're doing, and we'll certainly be giving updates in the upcoming budget season for all our town projects that we'll be working on. Now, let me just put us back over here. Back in business. So these last couple of slides, this talks about our water quality program. So for the last 25 years, we've had various volunteer groups out there collecting data for us. These are DO meters. We've just included that on our website. Some of the data wasn't really accessible before now, and I would bring this up because this is really a coordination with the IT Department. They have new GIS software that we've actually been able to include, an interactive map on the town website, so you can go and click on any individual point on here, and that's going to bring up the last 25 years of data for DO and utrification. So this is just another example of, you know, the town, our particular department, DNR, working with IT with something that they brought to try to make something more useful for the people in Chatham. And with that, this would be, you know, a nice tag-in for Ryan and the IT Department, unless there's any questions for DNR at this stage.
No questions, I guess. Thank you, Greg.
I'll leave you to switch it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Julie.
I meant to say during this whole presentation, how wonderful it is, because he answered every question, I think, that I had written to our chairman, that was important to me. And that was a wonderful presentation, to have the security of knowing where in the schedule, the money that we've asked the taxpayers to pay, where in the schedule we are on all those products, projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Ryan?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Finance Committee and Select Board. Today, I'm going to go over some things the IT Department is doing. The big thing that we're going to go over is what we're doing with our cloud data and certain AI tools we're using, and also the efficiency gains that we're making by using that. So basically, every department in town is pretty much using a cloud app. For permitting, we use OpenGov. For our assessment database, it's PK Cloud, Financial Vadar. GIS is a new platform, Esri, that we migrated to, Chatham TV, Champ DS, and then our newest Neptune 360, which is for water meter readings. The problem that we have is that all of these cloud apps are siloed, the data. So, you know, that data is limited in context, and it's tough to cross-reference that data. So the goal, and the goal that I've been looking at for a couple of years, and just this past year, that started to come into fruition with different possibilities, the goal basically is to transform that data into something that town staff can use through analytics and AI tools. So how is this done? So what we did was, we first set up a pilot project with a vendor, Artifacts AI. And what we did was work to connect these cloud apps through secure APIs and AI agents. APIs are just at its most basic, just software communicating to each other. So we pull that data into our model, and then what we can do is use queries and dashboards, integrate analytics, and use AI tools to extract meaning from that. So, and I'll have a demo real quick at the end to show you what I'm talking about, but staff, at the end, staff can use these dashboards and query those records and data to get information. So like I mentioned, our pilot project, short-term rental compliance. So what we do, stream, we stream data, so that's data pulled at an interval from short-term rental sites like Airbnb, VRBO, et cetera, also a lot of local ones. I believe there's almost 10 different sites. And then we cross-reference that with town and county data to create confidence scores and reports, utilizing analytics and AI tools. So what that does is, basically, we can take that data and be like, this property is a 90% chance matchup with this assessment database card, and then from there, we can check to see if there's a permit for it. So that was our pilot project, and we turned that on yesterday morning, so I can do a quick demo for that today. Water usage dashboard, so this is in progress. So what this will do is monitor and detect abnormal water usage patterns, identify leaks, unusual consumption spikes, and conservation measures to better manage consumption. So what that's doing is using Neptune 360, so that cloud data, and then it's comparing it with town data, you know? You know, are these properties on wells, you know, just information that we have? And then in the same fashion, have a dashboard and be able to query for information. So we currently have an AI chatbot on the website, where we are going to upgrade it, and the reason being is we want to be able to crawl And the reason being is we want to be able to crawl more custom sources. Crawling is basically, crawling a website would basically be taking, you know, data page by page and then being able to reference that with a query from a chatbot. And our new, our new chatbot we're working on, we'll be able to hit documents that we have before, like our zoning bylaws, which aren't on ECO 360, but we'll be able to take that data, be able to answer questions through that chatbot. And then our future project is an AI oracle, we like to call it. And what that is, is all this groundwork that we're working on and pulling these cloud apps together. Our goal is to have something for town staff and the public to be able to basically ask questions, you know, and use those sources to be able to, you know, answer questions, to use as a tool. So. Efficiencies gained in GIS. One project that we did was migration of over 8,000 hand-drawn and written, sometimes cursive tie cards using an AI model and automation. So, we had a predicament and we have these tie cards that are, have been handwritten and drawn, I believe, over the past like 50 years, maybe even longer. And we needed to migrate that to our new GIS system. So, we were able to use an AI model and not only, not only migrate it to it, but also take every single field that's on that tie card and put it into a database. And that's interesting, too, because it opens up the possibility down the road for people to, to basically ask and query that data to be onsite and be like, you know, in your phone, hey, let me know where the laterals are in this property. And then it can pull that information from a tie card and give them some idea. We estimated 350 safe staff hours by using this model and automation. And this was with light automation and 500 hours if somebody completely manually did this on their own. Short-term rental app, like I mentioned, the dashboard to track and analyze short-term rental properties, we estimated that we saved about 200 staff hours. And this, like I mentioned, is back live now and we'll be making some upgrades to it. And I know Chairman, Chairman Castro, you mentioned, you know, possibly finding some correlations why numbers went down, you know, with short-term rentals. So, maybe that's something we'll talk about on meeting with the Health Division and Artifacts on Monday. So, I'll bring that up. Maybe there's some kind of metric that we can, we can bring in.
Great.
The water usage app saves about 20 minutes per property if it was completed manually. We have over nine, over 9,000 properties in town. We didn't have the tool. I'm not sure we would go through every single property, so I didn't, didn't give a, saved, you know, over 100,000 staff hours because we probably wouldn't do that anyways, but did 20 minutes per property. And then, you know, the chatbot hopefully, you know, helps answer real-time questions from the public. And we like call-ins, people calling and asking questions, but, you know, we're hoping that it also, you know, just answers, you know, some of that info, you know, right on the spot for the public. And I'll just show you the dashboard for, as a demo real quick. All right. So, first I'll go over this public archive app. So, what this does is basically, these are all recent meetings. We take video and transcripts from meetings. It's automated. We can search meetings. So, here I'll just type in fish pier. You can see here, select board meeting came up. This meeting also authorized engineering. Here's a summary of the meeting through a language model. So, here's some information on the fish pier. What I'm going to do is I'm going to click Arti. Arti is the name of the chatbot. We can see the video comes up, a summary of the meeting, key topics. And see, here's the fish pier. So, project details, conclusion, the ones if we wanted to know more about the fish pier. So, what we can do is query, query that data. So. And, and the hope is that it will provide more data and context into that. So, now you can see that information starting to populate. And for people that can't see, you know, location, purpose, dimensions of the project overview, preferred option, concrete decking with plastic. And again, this is a tool. So, I mean, I am not, I was not at this meeting, so I don't know if this, but it, it's a tool to use. Engineering costs, a timeline. So, that gives you an idea about us querying data. And then I'll just show you the short-term rental.
Ryan, is this operational now?
Yes, the, the public archive app is internally and the short-term rental app is too, yes.
On the website?
No, no, internally.
Okay. Will it go on the website at some point this way?
The goal, the goal is yes, once we get that, the endgame, the oracle, where we can provide all data, that's the, that's the idea. That's the direction that we're going with.
All right. Thanks.
So, here's all the short-term rentals in Chatham. This just has a monthly occupancy and like I mentioned, this is polling data from all the rental websites out there. We've got monthly revenue. Here's different, different metrics here. We got revenue by segment, occupancy rate by segment, different demographics. And then here you can see all the listing sources here. And just as we have, I'll just bring up a demo property, which is 549 Main Street. And this is, you know, town office is on main, so this data is not factual, but just so you can get an idea of what, if I clicked on a residence property, brings up closest match card, summary, a property profile. It would bring up address, information about registered voter, what's that property? And again, this is all, besides OpenGov, this is all public data. This is all, you know, what's already out there. We're just pulling it into one place. And then again, it was so, you know, even Barstool County Registry deeds will pull documents there. And then you'll have a confidence score. So, for, if it was 100% match, that's saying that we're 100% sure this is the correct assessor's card. If they're not in OpenGov, then they're, you know, they may not be in compliance or however the Health Department determines that. That's the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions for Ryan? Comments? Joanne?
Wow. That's amazing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any from the board? I don't see any from that. Barbara.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just wondering, are any of our systems subject to being affected by something that happens like the lapse in service Monday and Tuesday from Amazon Web Services?
Yeah, so, so I know our asset management system uses AWS. It seemed just like a morning outage. It wasn't as, they, you know, they, they most likely had a failover, so, you know, it didn't affect us too much. But it largely didn't affect us overall. But I was concerned when I saw that.
All right. I don't see any others. Oh, I'm sorry.
Ryan, what do we do about data redundancy and storage?
Yeah, so we use mutable backups for all of our Microsoft data. So, that covers OneDrive, which is staff data, SharePoint, Team Sites, email. So, that's all mutably backed up daily. So, if there ever is an issue, we can restore that to the date.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
Okay. I guess Carrie, back to you. Thank you, Ryan.
Yes.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Greg. It was good. So, back to the budget. This slide is FY '26, our current budget through, forecast through FY 2029. So, again, FY '26 includes the CMEA and CMA union contracts and new debt at the end of FY 2025. For FY 2027, we are currently estimating a 5.26% increase for operating and occasional assessments. This number can change as we work through the budget season. We begin planning the FY 2027 budget by looking at the requests from the departments, prior year trends, and current year adjustments and future mandates. The budget forecast includes assumptions based on past performance and are subject to change. This chart shows the actual receipts received for the water fund. It does not include the $400,000 that's transferred from the general fund. It's just actual receipts. As you can see, in, in order to balance the water fund for 2026, the estimated receipts are higher by 1.4 million compared to the actuals received in 2025. This slide represents the actuals from 2023 through 2025 and the budget for FY 2026. As you can see, the actual expenses have increased over the past few years, mainly due to the water debt. And you will see that in FY 2024 and 2025, the water fund expenses came in higher than the actual receipts. With the new water rates, we are hopeful in FY 2026, we will have receipts come in to cover the budget and maybe possibly some more to cover the fund balance. At the close of FY 2025, the ending fund balance for the water fund was in the negative by roughly $85,000. This slide represents the estimates for 2027 through 2029. As we move through the budget season, we will have a better picture of what the expenses will be needed to support the water fund for FY 2027. The debt service is based on the current water fund debt schedule plus an additional $50,000 for the short-term borrowing and/or bonding costs associated with borrowing. So, this is the five-year capital plan as of October 11th, 2025. In FY 2026, we approved $3,162,000. Right now, the FY 2027 plans has $19,591,000 in there.
I think that's 19 million.
Oh, yeah, sorry, 19 million. Sorry. You are right, 19 million. Yes. So, last year, we also approved standalone items such as the transfer station, the Center for Active Living, and an ambulance. The items included in FY '27 are capital items, which are buildings and infrastructure improvements, equipment, vehicles, water and sewer capital, and roads and sidewalks. And if they're not approved, they'll move over to the next fiscal year to 2028. Other potential articles that we look at are the community preservation projects, which are due November 1st. We look at affordable and attainable housing projects, town projects. We have the five-year capital plan and water capital. Debt service. Overall, the town's level of debt service has declined from 20% to just over 15%, which is still on the moderate side. We continue to upgrade infrastructure as the budget will allow and seek alternative sources of funding rather than borrowing. Chatham is ahead of the curve in regards to searing the town, trending favorable. However, the town will need to bond before the end of the fiscal year, which may have an impact on the percent, but I don't predict it's going to go over the 20%. The financial policies will suggest an appropriate level of capital investment debt-supported. This slide is our general fund debt schedule as of June 30th, 2025. Just keep in mind, we still have other projects that we're going to be borrowing for probably before the end of this fiscal year. And this is from 2026, so it's our current 2026 through FY 33 for principal and interest. And this is the same for the water department. This is the water debt schedule for FY 2026 through FY 2033. So, I added a couple additional slides in here because it was requested on what overlay is and what it kind of stands for. So, I kind of broke it down. Overlay is an amount set aside on the tax recap sheet each year by the Board of Assessors. It's part of our total property tax levy, but it's reserved to cover abatements, which are reductions in tax bills granted after tax bills are issued, exemptions for veterans, elderly, or blind residents. The overlay ensures that even if some of taxes are reduced or unpaid, the town can still collect the full tax levy authorized at town meeting.
So, I had requested this slide because to me, the overlay has always been something of a mystifying concept. And I thought it was important to understand that it came up, I brought it up in the top when we were discussing the residential tax exemption. So, how is it populated? How is it, how is, how are the funds, how do the funds go into it? I see you have a second slide. Maybe you want to finish that up before answering the question.
So, it's not a separate tax. It's included in the total property tax levy. It's required by law each year. It's managed by the assessors and it helps the town avoid shortfalls when tax adjustments are made. And any leftover amount can be voted as overlay surplus and goes back to the town. So, what happens is, is the assessors will come up with and determine how many exemptions they've had in prior years. So, they'll come up with an amount that they need to have to cover those exemptions and possible abatements that are going to be coming up. And typically, it's around $250,000 is roughly what it's been. It can be a little bit higher depending. So, the more exemptions that we put on, that we, that is voted on, say like the HERO Act or some of the other ones that were just brought up that we haven't adopted yet, those will all take, we'll have to take that into consideration when we go to put our overlay in. And we'll have to say, maybe there's, you know, 50 more people that will have this or something.
So, the determination of the amount that goes into the overlay is made by the Board of Assessors? I assume they consult with the Finance Department?
Assessors and the Board of Assessors work together. Yep, yep. And the Board of Assessors.
And, and the funds stay in there until they're taken out, right? They go, they roll over from year to year?
The amount will roll over year to year unless it's voted as overlay surplus.
And I know that we, we, we do take, we have been taking 150,000 out each year for OPEB.
Yep.
It's approved at town meeting.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Carrie. Any, any questions on overlay? All right. Joanne, you must know this better than most because of your prior work, but thank you.
It's good to explain this.
Thank you.
Thank you. FY 2027, looking ahead. Health insurance premiums, pension obligations, and collective bargaining agreements increase yearly. We have slowing real estate activity, which affects local receipts, excise tax, building permits, and fees. We have meals and rooms taxes, which have rebounded post-COVID, but have begun to level off, particularly in seasonal communities. Communities dependent on tourism or second home economies are vulnerable, vulnerable to shifts in consumer spending. Limited grant capacity and matching fund requirements strain local budgets. These are all items that we have to keep in mind when we work on our FY 2027 budget, the rising cost of health insurance, liability, utilities, wages, where inflation has sharply increased the construction materials and equipment costs for capital projects, school funding pressures, and infrastructure and climate resilience are just a few. school funding pressures, and infrastructure and climate resilience are just a few. So I had this slide last year, and I know the departments have been very good at looking at their fee schedules, but I put it up again just to make sure, I feel like we should be looking at them year to year to make sure we are, our fees are conservative and more in line with some of the other towns as well. The FY 2027 budget guidelines are level services, so all departments are to submit a level service budget to look at their fee schedules. And our budgets, our operating and capital are due November 21. And I will pass this over to Jill.
Thank you, Carrie. So this is the final slide of our presentation, and I wanted to thank everyone for your participation and shared commitment to Chatham's financial stewardship. As you will see here, the next steps include the Select Board reviewing its goals and objectives for calendar year 2026 and fiscal year 2027. And then, Department budgets will be submitting those. Department will be submitting their budgets to us in November and December. And then January through March, there will be public budget review meetings between the Select Board and the Finance Committee. And then the Select Board by December 31 will set the date for the annual town meeting, and they'll do that in, in compliance with the town's bylaw, I would imagine, early December for that vote. And so that would trigger our annual town meeting date as well as the following town election. So that is all we have tonight. We're looking forward to your questions and discussion. Here's some prompts in case you need them. What are the top community priorities or challenges we should address in FY 27? Or, and what long-term commitments or emerging issues should shape this year's decision? In the room tonight, I didn't introduce them, but we have many of our town department heads, as well as town department heads, participating virtually through Teams. So we're all happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Jill, I just wanted to point out, we are going to have one joint Finance Committee Select Board meeting to go over one particular department, a sort of innovation this year. Is that the DPW?
It is. So we're looking to do a joint meeting at a regular Select Board meeting. We just have to determine the time. And we're going to review the DPW budget as well as public safety. Those presentations could then generate additional review by the Select Board or the FINCOM at a subsequent meeting, but we thought we would try this so that it would be more efficient for your time in reviewing the budgets and free up some capacity at meetings to delve, delve a little deeper.
One additional administrative point apropos of expenditures going forward, I do want to remind everyone that tomorrow at 11 o'clock is the first meeting of the Working Group on the Center for Active Living. It is a public meeting. It will be held here in the annex, but it will be, is that broadcast live?
It will not be live, but it will be a Teams meeting. So the public can participate remotely if they're not able to come in person.
They can log on or they can participate by phone. And also, I do want to reacknowledge that Dr. Carpenter is here with Mr. McMillan and Dr. Millen. Did, did you have any comments you wanted to make, Dr. Carpenter, your department? Did you want to make them now? Or otherwise, I'll, I'll open this up to questions from the board, boards and the public.
I don't have comments to make. I, you know, I think annually, when we come here, we answer questions. And I think a lot of times, the questions that come at us at this point in the year is sort of what the enrollment looks like and the projections going forward. So we're prepared to talk about that.
Sure.
When the time comes.
Thank you. And I do mention that we did have in the packet your capital presentation that you made to the School Committee. So with that, I'm going to open it up for us to questions, comments from.
Dean, just a quick footnote, actually, before we go. We're good for 4 o'clock. I don't know if you got the note, but for these prospective joint meetings, 4 o'clock start time would be suitable for us.
Great. Thank you. And I expect that to be in February, and some of you gave us your availability. So if there are any conflicts in February, if you let us know. It will be on a Tuesday afternoon at 4:00 PM. So thank you very much for that.
Okay. I just want to turn to the Select Board. My fellow board members, are there any questions or comments to Jill, Carrie, or any of the department heads or School Committee? Corey?
I guess the only, the only thing is, I really don't have any. I mean, this is our kickoff meeting, and we started to dive deep, deeper into it down the road. But the one thing, because IT was kind of highlighted tonight, you know, we've clearly spent a fair amount of money on IT over the last couple of years, making great improvements in, in certain areas. But to some degree, we're still getting a little bit of challenges with some of the audio elements of some of the secondary meeting rooms, the community buildings, whatever that. Is there anything being focused on trying to address those shortcomings as we, you know, improve our IT technology?
So that's a really good note to make for us. So we haven't received all of the department capital requests yet. So certainly, we can discuss that with Chad and TV and the IT team.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. I'm going to turn it over to Steve and ask you to handle the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Dean. Any questions for the presenters or assembled staff? Our normally talkative committee? Okay. I've got a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to welcome Scott and his team and acknowledge I am what I understand to be a pending retirement. So congratulations on that. Quick question. Does Monomoy have a district-wide school cell phone policy?
We, we have a, I will call it practices that happen building by building that are sort of age-appropriate. So.
Scott, you might want to bring the mic a little closer.
We have practices that, that happen that are kind of laid out in our student handbooks that are building by building, age-appropriate, sort of, you know, largely elementary school. There's no such tech, you know, technologies. The middle schoolers have them but don't have access to them. So it's, you're, you're not out. At high school, there are, in every classroom, there are sort of locking boxes that, that teachers have students park devices, you know, devices in. But, but again, you know, so there's practices that are sort of laid out in the, in the student handbook, but there's not, you know, sort of a, a district-wide, there shall be no, you know, cell phones.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you. I've received input from the committee, which I share regarding the process on the residential tax exemption that the Select Board followed. And I think to say that we were disappointed not to be part of that conversation would be an understatement. Going from what seemed to be kind of zero to 60 in a 90-minute meeting or a 60-minute meeting. I still don't know exactly what problem we're trying to solve with the residential tax exemption, and I think that view is broadly shared in the committee. And it seemed like we went hunting for a solution with a blender bus. Are there 50 people who we're trying to protect and assist? Are there 5,000? Because we just gave a tax break to, what, 6,000 residents? And a tax increase to over 1,000 Chatham residents, existing residents. So I just don't understand it, and I honestly feel as though we should really have been a part of this process. So enough said. Delighted to hear there's going to be a formal review of the financial policies, something we noted out last year. Fees. Page five of the transmission memo said fee structure should be analyzed each year. Is that a should be or will be?
Well, I feel like it, that is a very good question.
More, more of a guideline in the rule.
We don't have it in our policies yet, that we review them every year, but I feel like it should be reviewed each year, the fees. And if it's in January, it should be January while we're working on the budget.
Yep.
Not in the middle of a budget year, of a season, or vice versa. I feel like it should just be every January, we should be looking at our fees to make sure they're supporting our operational budgets.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would agree. Reiterate our standing on the short-term inspection, short-term rental inspection fee, which I think at $50, we all agreed was appallingly low. So whether that's 100 or 150 pursuant to our recommendation to the Board, we would highlight that, that we hope we can make some progress. I was also struck by the fact that finally, a couple, somebody who spent $10 million on a property on Shore Road received a whopping $5,000 fine for a pretty gross violation of our historic preservation rules and code. I don't know how those are established. There's a state element to that, but I seriously urge reconsideration because a $5,000 fine on a $10 million property, which is being entirely rebuilt, is ridiculous. And I would be remiss if I didn't reiterate our steadfast opposition to the Kroll Road project, but I'm sure you guys all knew that. So, anything else from anybody? Okay. Thank you.
I just want to address something about the, the residential tax exemption because it does affect the current budget planning for FY 2027, since the town manager and her staff in the assessing department are going to have to get things ready to implement the adoption of this policy for FY 27, right? That's when the Board voted to put it in. So including possible hiring of an additional staff person. So that's something that, that I think, I certainly, when you were looking in this direction, I think you should have looked past me, but.
I understand you mean to the point that's.
That's something I think, you know, we'll have to take a look at as the, as the town, as the assessing budget is presented within the context of the Finance Department budget proposal. And also, it isn't, it isn't a done deal yet. It has to be approved by the Select Board next September during the classification hearing. So it's conceivable that, depending on people's minds at that time, it might, might not be approved. I, I know some people feel very passionately about it on my board, but this Finance Committee will certainly have an opportunity between now and then to express itself if it chooses to do so.
Well, thank you. I certainly hope so, frankly.
Leave it like that. As far as the, the fine on the property, that's really within the jurisdiction of the Historical Commission. They made their determination on it. So, okay.
Didn't know if there were any guidelines to the, so just to your point.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm highly confident, based on the discussions we've had in this committee, that there's broad support for initiatives to keep Chathamites in Chatham to the extent they require assistance. I just think we don't disagree with both the process as highlighted and what exactly we're trying to accomplish. Is it for people over 65? Is it for people who are in tight pants? Is it for people who've lived here for four generations? I don't, none of this has ever been made clear as to what we're really trying to accomplish with this program. So I'll leave it at that, but I think that's, I want to be very clear about the specific objection.
Okay.
We don't, we don't object to the mission.
All right. Thank you. If there are no other, just Corey.
Just a more question for the town manager, because the Finance Chair has brought this up, but the Kroll Road intersection project, we haven't talked about that for quite some time. I know we've had a, you know, some hearty discussions on the Select Board level, you know, years back.
You and I tried to defeat it.
Correct. Yes. Correct.
We've got a little help.
So, 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 so I guess, what is the status on that? Because it, you know, the Finance Committee has put it in the reports. You know, Mr. Daniels has just mentioned it again. I know there's probably some variety of opinions or thoughts on it from the Select Board level. Where does that currently stand as far as the next discussion point?
So the next step would be a public hearing for the 25% design. And we have been talking about that for probably the last three years. More recently, MassDOT, Massachusetts Department of Transportation had required some underground survey work for utilities. And so more recently, you may have seen some pavement markings along the Kroll Road intersection going towards CVS Center, as well as going a little further towards the other way. I should guess, I don't know if that's south or north. So we're, we've done everything that needs to be done that we had started, I think, back in 2021 for that final design. So the next step would be, and I'm not sure if Rob has any more information. He's shaking his head. No. The next step would be to come before the Select Board for a public hearing, and the Board would then vote to whether to proceed or not.
Yes, Joanne.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we keep bringing this up because we don't want to forget that this is the gateway to our beautiful town, and it, it deserves a lot of discussion, a lot of input. And we have already said in our committee that as of now, we don't think the, what we've heard about is going to happen is what we don't want, and we want the town to think about it and make sure of what they want for this intersection. And we will keep bringing it up. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, for doing that because it seems to be floating somewhat. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. If there are no other comments or questions from board members, I was going to ask if anyone had in the public. There, yes, Carolyn. And then if anyone online has any questions or comments, we'll take those as well. Carolyn McClellan.
Hello, everyone. Carolyn McClellan, South Chatham. I just have a few comments I wanted to make directed or concerning the FINCOM's report that they submitted that was online. Specifically, the, I think it's on page three, in regards to the topic, topics of note and water. On page three, it says halfway down the paragraph, in regards to, we refer back to our report to the Select Board on the fiscal year 25, 25 proposed budget regarding water supply and the prospect for increasing demand on our plans for attainable and affordable housing come closer to realization. With 90 new housing units in the train and the Select Board focus on a goal of 200 new units over the next five years, we need to ensure that the town can deliver the water required by these new residents. As noted last year, without having a direct line of sight into specific plans of actions, we would hope that the Affordable Housing Trust, the Office of Community Development, and the Department of Public Works and the Town Manager are working collaboratively to ensure the available, available water supply exceed, water supply exceeds forecast demands on these new projects. So my concern is that I, for the life of me, can't understand why we keep relating our water needs to affordable housing. First of all, affordable housing is not the cause of our current water situation, and I know that for certain because we haven't really built any. Okay? So we're not the issue. Okay? And if you look at all the water reports, it's a bell curve. The usage goes up in the summer. Year-round use is not the problem. We have a spike in the summertime. And if you want to have a meeting between the Affordable Trust and the Community Development and the Public Works to discuss water, I don't know what we're going to discuss about it because we don't have the water. You need to have the ZBA and the Planning Board in that meeting discussing all the permits they issue to these massive buildings, when they're turning residential neighborhoods into commercial enterprises, building McMansions. That's where our excessive water use is. Right now, the ZBA is about to force an appeal on our Pending Penrose Project, which would cause, if it goes through, would cause at least a year delay. Plus, it's about two years of a build-out. That's three years. Three years we'd have to wait if it even goes through at all. Now, mind you, the, the ZBA averages about 30 new, 30 new McMansions a year. So that would be, in the next three years, that would be 90 McMansions that could get built while we're waiting for affordable housing. Those, those buildings are going to use way more water than what we're going to use. We are not the problem. And I really resent the fact that when you, you're talking about all the resources of the town, you don't say the town needs to look at all of its building. Are we going to, if the town wants to continue to make these McMansions and allow the zoning to allow, the zoning board doesn't do anything wrong. This is how our laws, our bylaws are written that allows for that. If you want to continue to do that, go ahead. But over the next few years, over the next decade, you're just going to have more and more of these mega houses built that are going to use your water. But, and if that's your choice, fine. But you cannot blame affordable housing. You cannot constantly create a narrative where you're tying our water usage. You cannot constantly create a narrative where you're tying our water usage to affordable housing. It's disingenuous and it's causing more problems for our year-round sustainability, which should be your number one priority. So, thank you.
Thank you, I'd be happy to respond. Thank you, Carolyn, I appreciate your interest and concern as usual. I think to be clear, we are, there's no language in this document that I can see that blames or otherwise casts aspersions on attainable affordable housing. This committee, as early as 2021, issued a 19-page report to the select board, laying out a roadmap for how to get more housing in this town. We stand by that, and quite frankly, a number of the recommendations were adopted. We have no carriage over the ZBA and the planning board, to be clear, obviously, and I think the ask is pretty straightforward, is we're building these houses, building other houses as you point out, we should just have competition to make sure we have adequate supply. I defer to Rob if he'd like to offer insights on that and our availability. So, I get it, but I don't think simply saying the stakeholders in this process should be talking to each other is a bad recommendation.
Carolyn, looks like you want to have a response to that.
Sorry, I exited too soon. Sorry, my number one concern is the fact that when you, when you mention water and our limited resources, you only list affordable housing and not, this is your report to the town, talking about what's ahead for the town, what are the risks, what are our financial, how are we in financial jeopardy, water resources are a big issue, so I would think you'd also state, at least, I think it's a bigger issue, is that the unbridled development that's going on in town that happens has nothing to do with affordable housing. This is what's happening, and are we going to address it? Are we going to do anything about it? I know you support affordable housing, but I think this, this way of looking at it constantly puts affordable housing in the epicenter of the conversation of we don't have enough water, where we don't even have any, how are we the problem? So.
Aside from the fact that we're hoping to get 200 units over the next couple of years, but I take your point.
But what's stalling that.
Stop, please. I take your point, I don't disagree with your point, this was last year's report, if you'd like me to put some language in this year's report, casting a broader net over the issue, I'd be happy to do that.
I would be very appreciative of that.
Done.
All right, thank you very much.
He's closed.
I would point out that at the insistence of the select board, particularly Mr. Dykens and myself over the last several years, we now have two new wells coming online, numbers 10 and 11, finally, finally we got approval in number 10, and I know the finance committee in its report has consistently urged us to make sure that we, that we look at new wells, so I'm happy, I'm happy that we're able to report that. Okay.
And I would just simply add an adequate rate structure, too.
Which we did that, we appreciate that, yes. I'm just going to ask if there's any member of the public that has any, in addition to Carolyn, that has any comments, anyone online? I don't see anyone, so.
Mr. Chair, if I can just add.
Yes, yes, Jill.
One of the demos that Ryan did through IT about short-term rentals, we're able to, we will be able to populate it with water usage, too, so we would have a better idea of how short-term rentals affect our water consumption.
Yes, I think that's going to show a lot. Well, I don't see any other comments or questions. Stuart, you had something, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you. It was really, because I'm new, and for the, for the public, that, I thank you for the packet, it was really informative, even, even to those of us who are somewhat familiar with the budget, this was really good. And I know that last year's, one of, in the packet was our perspective on the proposed 2026 budget by Stephen and Carrie. I found it really helpful, I think it's, I think there's some, it was probably the most polite memo I've ever written or ever read about warning signs. So, I think it would be helpful for people to review that because there are definitely some things that I think the town needs to pay attention to, and most, some of the things to get to this slide are, that I, it was helpful for me was the debt service that were servicing, the number of employees, the increase of the number of employees was surprising, so, something I think the public should take a look at, the stress on our water system, including what Caroline, I don't know if she's still here, but what Caroline had said I think is, is important, and, and thanks, I look forward to your new statement.
Thank you. To be clear, and to not make Carrie appear to be bycatch, but this is the work of the finance committee, it's the collaborative and collective work of the committee and the statement of our sort of aggregated views. So, I know her name's on the letterhead as well, but we bear all responsibility for whatever, as we just saw, for whatever's in here.
Yeah, it, well, I found it helpful, so whomever, thank you for that.
And we'll be receiving a new one in February, we'll get a new one in February, I guess.
February 17.
Okay.
Not a day sooner.
Well, if there is nothing else to say, we'll call the meeting to a close and we'll, Superintendent Carpenter, yes?
I was going to say, as nobody asked about enrollment, I'm happy to kind of tie in enrollment, which ultimately, I think comes back to the whole affordable housing piece.
Sure, do you want to say something?
So, so I have just three things, you know, three things to quickly talk about. First, last night, the middle school renovation building committee met, we will be taking forward to the school committee on Thursday, the proposal or the low bidder for that job. The nice thing is, it did come in significantly under budget in terms of what the bid was, and knock on wood, as the project goes all the way through.
Was it lower than the estimates?
Yes, so, so, you know, so the estimate was an $11.5 million project, and it, at the moment, without actually being done, the estimate, or the bid from the lowest bidder came in about $2.2 million less. So, that potentially will play out well for the taxpayers in both towns.
Huh? We used to go yet.
Yeah, there's a long way to go.
There's a reason I asked, there's a reason I asked that question.
Deciding to put up, and there's a lot of citing to remove to really understand what the existing conditions underneath it all, but, you know, but that's, you know, that's good news. In terms of just an enrollment report, is at the end of the day, you know, enrollment sort of drives what the school districts, you know, what the school district's budget is, and I think it's important for Chatham to understand, you know, the enrollment and where Chatham Elementary School is. Chatham Elementary School actually is up 4% in enrollment this year, but I'll put this caveat, we went and added a program at Chatham Elementary School this past, this past budget cycle. We, we opened up a PUPS preschool program, which is a full-day, full-school-year program for families in our two towns who, you know, who would like access to that. We have traditionally at the, at the elementary school level, run a integrated preschool, we're still running that, that has, that's a half-day, a half-day school-year program that's not a complete week, so it doesn't necessarily help families, working families that need, you know, that need sort of preschool and the childcare that oftentimes comes with that. You know, so we, you know, so we, we reached out to our families to see what the need was. There's a clear need for full-day options for, you know, for families, so we opened a PUPS program, having, you know, so that allowed us to have more, you know, more preschoolers at Chatham Elementary School that sort of artificially pulled up the numbers at, at Chatham Elementary School. So, our Chatham residents at Chatham Elementary School is actually down by three students this year. There are some Harwich residents in that PUPS preschool program, so they, they, in addition with a couple school choice seats and a couple of the other grade levels, have, have pulled up the enrollment by seven students, which, which accounts for that 4% increase in enrollment at Chatham Elementary School. Harwich Elementary School, by contrast, saw an eight, an 8.4% decrease in enrollment. Part of it's because of that PUPS program pulling some kids that might be in preschool over in Harwich into that building, and the other part of it is that, that both of our towns are, are seeing a loss of elementary-age students at pretty alarming rates, and I'll kind of come back to that here when I sort of talk about sort of longer-term trends. The middle school, we see a decline of students at 3.5% this year, the high school, four-point, the high school's 4.8% decline in enrollment. A lot of that decline is driven by, we had, last year's graduating class was our large class, we had 157 seniors graduate last year, and only 138 students come up into the eighth, into the eighth grade to sort of fill those, you know, to fill those seats. So, so as a school district, you know, we are, or sorry, as a, as a school district, we're down, we're down almost 5% in enrollment, and again, a lot of that's happening at the earlier grade levels and now coming forward. If we're looking at, at Chatham overall, over all the grade levels, Chatham is down compared to the prior year by 22 students, which is a 6.1% decline in enrollment of Chatham students within the district. Harwich is down by 62 students, which is a 5.3% decline in enrollment, and it's that differential between the, the decrease in Harwich students and the decrease in Chatham students that sometimes fuels some of that tension between our two towns, because at the end of the day, it's, it's the enrollment that drives the assessments. So to, to kind of get a, a little sort of overview of where we are with, with foundation enrollment, so, so what I was just talking about was enrollment in the school district, which is different than foundation enrollment. Foundation enrollment is the students that budgetarily were responsible for, so they're students who attend Monomoy but live in Chatham, or, sorry, that, students that live in Chatham that attend Monomoy or school choice elsewhere to another, another public school district or go to a charter school, so they're, they're ones we're financially responsible for, and the same with the Harwich ones. In the 12 years going into this past budget year that we've been Monomoy, we've seen the foundation enrollment for Chatham students decrease by 24%. In the 12 years that we've been Monomoy, we've seen Harwich students decrease by 8%. And that really gets down to when people are talking about affordable housing, you know, we're seeing more and more of our families really priced out of our two towns, and it's, and it's seen in those foundation enrollment numbers. Michael will be doing a presentation on Thursday at the school committee, sort of a, you know, an FY 26 budget, you know, sort of kick off the budget season, you know, for us, he'll have a report that he'll be presenting to the school committee, we'll be sending it to you, and would be happy to come back and do a bigger report back to your select board and finance committee and the, the town boards in Harwich. On page 39 of that report, Michael's got some great graphics on what foundation enrollment's going and how that split is going to play out when it comes to our assessments. If we look forward just in the next six years, based on the, the students that we see in the system and the projections that we have coming up, Chatham will see its enrollment of school-aged children drop by another 23% from where it is right now. Harwich will see their numbers drop by 16% from where it is right now. Now, so we're seeing this rapid decline in young, young children or school districts in part because of the difficulty to find housing for, you know, for their families, and we see this when it comes to me running the school district, just trying to get staff, you know, who can find, who can find Harwich and Chatham, you know, affordable to, affordable to live in. How that plays, how that's played out in terms of the, you know, the foundation enrollment behind the assessment, in the first 12 years that we've been Monomoy, there's been a 3.63% shift in enrollment. So when we started at, you know, as Monomoy, Chatham represented 26.58% of the foundation enrollment, and it, and it decreased by, you know, by 3.63% to 22.95%. Now, you know, where that's felt in terms of the purse strings in our partner town in Harwich is, you know, every time that foundation enrollment sort of incrementally shifts, there's a, you know, there's an impact, you know, so it's less, less in the assessment for Harwich or for Chatham, more in the assessment, you know, in, in Harwich. And, you know, so, you know, so per year, that's, I mean, it seems small, it's a 0.3% shift in foundation enrollment on average over those 12 years, but that plays out over, you know, over the course of time, you take all those 0.3% shifts, you know, so in a roughly $50 million budget, you know, a three, you know, a 3.63% shift in position tends to be fairly significant when you look at, you know, that compounded. If we look at the next six years, where we project that will go is that Chatham's position will shift, that they'll lose relative to Harwich another 1.24% is what we're projecting, you know, the next six years, you know, to look like. So, you know, so that trend, you know, that trend continues, and I, and at the end of the day, it's, it's, it comes down to, you know, this whole concept of affordable housing and, and how do we, you know, how do we make it affordable for families to stay in the system, but also the differential between how it's playing out between our two towns.
Thank you. Can I just ask a question without getting into the weeds? Back in July, the select board from Harwich wrote to the school committee and asked to begin the process of reviewing the agreement, the intermunicipal agreement between the two towns, the district agreement among the district and the two towns. What is the posture of the school committee on this at this, this time?
Well, I, I mean, you couldn't imagine that, you know, that our school committee represents four, you know, four people from Harwich and four people, you know, four people from Chatham. I think it's not.
I wasn't really looking as to where they stood on it, I just wanted, process-wise, what, what is the response of the?
Yes, so, you know, so the school committee, you know, the school committee has responded to Harwich that they've, you know, so they actually voted at one of their most recent meetings and sent Harwich a letter back saying, you know, acknowledging receipt of the letter, and also acknowledging, you know, a willingness to, you know, to get involved, you know, working with the finance departments in both towns at, at looking at, you know, sort of long-range projections, but also, you know, also, you know, wishing to facilitate any sort of, you know, joint conversations, you know, between full boards and, and the committee itself.
So the committee hasn't taken any position on the merits?
Right, because.
Because there's no proposal yet.
I think, I think in part, there hasn't been a.
Proposal.
An ask, you know, or a proposal, and, and I, in my position as superintendent, have just pushed back a little bit, just saying, you know, like, you know, if there's an ask coming, be sure that there's a clear articulation on, you know, what the why is behind that ask.
Yes, you gave us a presentation on that recently, and we appreciate that, and you pointed out that any change in the regional agreement has to be approved by town, the town meetings, and was it a two-thirds vote, both?
It's a majority vote.
Majority vote, each, each town meeting, okay. Any questions for Dr. Carpenter or his, his team? Okay, I'll turn to the chair of the finance committee to adjourn his group.
To read them out, John?
Motion to adjourn.
Eric?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
The chairs in favor. Thank you.
Forgot our people.
Oh, my God.
People on the island over there.
Where did you guys show up? Barbara?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, guys, sincere apologies.
Thank you. So you are adjourned, I'll accept the motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and we are adjourned at 6:46 PM. Thank you, everyone, thank you to the department heads, thank you Jill, thank you Carrie.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone. Good night, everyone.
Really don't have the mental capacity.